It's a call to order, the March 9th meeting of the Peters Township Council. Mr. Lauer, the roll call.
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigel.
Here.
Mr. Arcuri.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Burquist.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis will not be here.
I present the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes from the February 24th meeting.
So moved, second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six nothing. Special reports, there are none. Audience comments, if anybody in the audience has any comments on a non-agenda item, please come forth, state your name, and make some comments. Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business, of which there is none. New business, the first item is award of a construction contract for the Rolling Hills Drive. Lauer.
So the 2020 Peters Township operating budget included an appropriation of more than $4 billion for the construction of the Rolling Hills Transportation Improvement Phase Two. This project involves the completion of Rolling Hills Drive and the construction of a single lies intersection at East McMurray Road. We opened bids on February 21st. What you see on the screen is the bid tabulation from that. The low bidder is A. Liberoni. This is the contractor who constructed the upper portion of the roadway. He is also the contractor that is doing the site work for the school district. So, from the standpoint of coordination, it makes things a whole lot easier. The other thing is, this firm's worked with us not only on the Rolling Hills Drive project, they also have done other work, including the expansion of Peterswood Park, and we've always been pleased with their work and cooperation. So, it's going to be my recommendation that the council award a contract to A. Liberoni for $2,379,019.03.
Moved, we award the contract for Rolling Hills Drive Phase Two project to A. Liberoni for the amount of $2,379,019.03.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just a quick question, Mr. Lauer. Did we have any change orders from them on Phase One?
No.
Good, thank you.
Anything else in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six nothing. All right, the next item is transfer of property to PennDOT as required by the highway occupancy permits for Rolling Hills Drive.
So, one of the things that we have been relating to you is that in terms of the highway occupancy permit, although we're not in possession of it yet, we are making progress, and what is left is a number of administrative items. This item in particular is some indication that PennDOT has accepted the design that we're looking at, because they've determined exactly what the transfer of the right-of-way should look like. What you see in front of you is just one segment of three drawings that define the right-of-way that's to be transferred. And, oh, here we go. It's that yellow line that runs across the top. But like I say, this is just one sheet of three sheets. I think the important thing to take from it is, again, that we're moving forward with PennDOT to be able to get to that issuance of that permit. So, it's my recommendation that council authorize the transfer to PennDOT of the required right-of-way for the highway occupancy permit for Rolling Hills Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. So, the part in the yellow is what we're giving to the state?
Yes.
So, is there a corresponding transfer of the part that's being vacated to the township?
There will be, but it isn't now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any discussion?
No.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six nothing. Next item is the approval for reporting purposes of the Westbury consolidation plans as shown in drawings prepared by the Red Wing Group dated August 6, 2019 for environmentally sound enterprises LLC.
So, at the December 16th meeting, council took action on a consolidation plan, consolidate properties together, as well as the final plan for the development. Subsequent to that, what was discovered is that there was a discrepancy on the one corner of the property, and that a portion that's approximately somewhere between 15 and 20 feet wide was actually, that was included in the plan, was actually owned by an adjacent party. So, as a result of that, what council needs to do is to reapprove the consolidation plan. And, this is the same drawing that you saw in 2019. That change would have actually occurred to this parcel here. But, what the consolidation plan continues to do, as it did then, is to take these numerous parcels and reduce them to three. It's my recommendation that council reapprove the consolidation plan for Westbury. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed, six nothing. Approval of Westbury final plans as shown in the drawings for Red Swing dated August 21st.
So, this was the plan, the final plan that was approved in December. In this corner here is where that change in that property line occurs. The impact is, it has resulted in reconfiguration of the lots in that area. The number of lots hasn't changed, it's just that they're being reconfigured to accommodate that change. The one thing that I would suggest to you is, just as when this was originally approved, there are a number of conditions that were placed, and the bulk of these are coming out of the Planning Commission. In addition to that, I think council should require the development to execute a subdivision improvement agreement. This is something that's required on all plans. There are a number of outstanding fees and escrows that have occurred because of the review of this by the engineer, in that those should be paid. There is a highway occupancy permit that is needed prior to commencing of work, and that should be a condition of approval. And finally, a pre-construction meeting with the township staff. So, excuse me, and the financial guarantee of all improvements prior to the Peters Township releasing the final plan for recording, and that no building permit should be issued until the earthwork on Bourbon Drive for the turnaround is complete. With that in mind, and the conditions of the Planning Commission, as well as the conditions in the mandatory report, it's my recommendation that council approve the Westbury final plan as shown on drawings prepared by Red Wings Group dated February 4, 2020.
I have a question. What's the front building line?
Twenty.
All these ones?
Look, this is a special zoning district. It's the Village Residential Zoning District, and the minimum is 20, max is 25.
And the open space is going to state property association, we're not the authority?
Correct. All open space will be HOA owned. The township will take ownership of the two detention facilities.
You know, when we talked about this before, Mr. Lewis made an observation about the size of some of the lots, and the idea that if people were going to try to do accessory buildings or pools or anything like that, it could potentially be a problem in that area. I've made it pretty clear personally that if we're doing this kind of modification to the setbacks, I think we need to not, we need to tell people upfront, don't ask. But there's some really funky shaped lots that are being put together here, I mean, with that modification we just approved earlier. I mean, do we counsel people about that?
Well, we do. They know that there's lot coverage, and there's setbacks, that Ryan Holmes, who will be the builder in this plan, will make sure that the house that's being sold for a particular lot can fit on the lot.
I hope so. Because, I mean, it really affects the size of the building and everything else.
It does.
Now, is there going to be a cul- I'm sorry.
No, no.
Is there going to be a cul-de-sac at the end of Barnett Drive? Because that plan shows it, but this one in our document doesn't.
There is one. That's a temporary cul-de-sac as well, that could potentially head north at some point in the future.
And could you move, so, under number two, it says the bus stop be moved to the northern side of Westbury Drive?
See on the top, does that, does that work?
Is that for the school bus?
Well, there's a, the sidewalk is on this side of Westbury Drive.
Right.
In the plan, the sidewalks are on both sides of the street. They're showing the bus stop on this side, the opposite side of the sidewalks. It needs to be over here on the sidewalk side.
But is that a school bus?
Yes, school bus.
Well, because we have the whole issue of the Washington Bus Line coming through, and I wasn't sure.
For now, it's just for school buses.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'll make a motion that council approve Westbury final plan as shown on drawings prepared by Red Swing Group dated February 4, 2020 for environmentally sound enterprises, subject to conditions recommended by Peters Township planning, as well as recommended by the township manager.
I'll second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, six nothing. Next item is approval of amendment to the collective bargaining agreement between the International Firefighters Union and Peters Township providing for the position of captain.
So, as part of last year's budget workshop, Chief McLaughlin proposed revising the organizational structure of the fire department, which included the creation of a position of fire captain. We have adopted a job description for the position of fire captain, but before that working supervisor position can actually be filled, it requires an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement. So, I've had a chance to sit down with the representatives from the firefighters, and we've come to a tentative agreement that there would be an incremental rate of $1.25 per hour for 2020 and 2021, and that that would go then to $1.50 per hour in 2022 and I guess the thing that I would point out to you is that when you compare that to like the, that would be the working supervisor of the police department, that incremental increase is nowhere near what that would be if it were inside the police department. The one thing I give a lot of credit to the firefighters is that they are more than willing to work with us to be able to implement these kind of things, so.
I have two questions. How does settling on that rate per hour then relate to the salary of the fire chief and the deputy?
It will not impact them.
Okay, because we've had that issue.
Well, I was going to say, and I will say that it will not impact them now, but, and I don't think it impacts the fire chief's rate, but sometime in the future, it might impact the deputy firekeeper chief's rate, but it does not impact them now.
Okay, and I have a question, and it might be for the chief. There's a comment about trading shifts, and I wondered, does it mean that only captains can trade with captains?
You can answer that, if you want, but that language is language that's in the existing contract. The only thing that changed, we included the entire section, the only thing that changed was the first paragraph. The first paragraph talked about a fourth squad, which is a squad that was developed to fill in, there's a thing called a Kelly Day, when people are off, to fill in for that Kelly Day. That Kelly Day will no longer exist, because there'll be enough firefighters to be able to do that and not have a special squad.
Well, the reason I ask is that in the police agreement, if someone in another position isn't available and a regular patrol officer has to fill in, they're compensated.
And?
So, my question is about trading shifts. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
So, you know, are people going to be able to create ways to get paid more by trading shifts?
You could answer that, but I find that hard to believe inside the fire department because of that 24-hour schedule.
Good question. General practice is, we typically don't trade shifts. People are awarded time off, they have vacation holidays, personal accounting, things like that. If that time gets used, and there's an extenuating circumstance for what we call is a one-for-one trade, it can be approved by the fire chief, but until those conditions are met. I myself, and in previous administrations also, we have not approved trades without those conditions being met. One-for-one trades are considered also not under the rank of what would be the rank of captain to captain, but paramedic for paramedic, advanced CMT for advanced CMT, so on and so forth. But, general practice is, we generally don't trade shifts.
Do you have any idea in this, if you got a call up of the captain, who would be the technically able to fill in, the other captain, or how would you handle? I mean, I understand more in daylight, if there's no captain, that's fine, because you're a day, but there's officers, but in the evening hours, what else would a call up?
From a cost-benefit standpoint?
I'm not worried about the cost-benefit, I'm.
Worried about operation? It would come at a more significant cost, again, that not being the issue, you're trying to work with consistency. What we're going to have in place is the ability for the senior firefighter on that ship to take those duties that are operative from day to day. Outside of those duties, there are ancillary duties that that dollar 25 encompasses. One of them might be training, one of them might be community risk reduction, things like that, that captains will be responsible for. But inside of a 24-hour shift, the captain's going to be responsible for the duty time sheet, shipwork, paperwork, reporting all mishaps and everything to the deputy chief and ultimately the chief. So, what's negotiated, Mr. Lauer, regarding from all those 50 cents an hour?
Like I say, what's, there is a, you know, just as there was in the fire department, an officer in charge, there will in essence be, for lack of a better term, a firefighter in charge. They will not be compensated at that same rate, because part of the thought of the captain is that not only will they have charge of the ship, but they will also have special projects that they may work on outside of that. So, that firefighter in charge may assume responsibility for the ship, but not all these other projects. So, they're going to be compensated at much lower rate than the captain.
And some of that language has to do with, now that, or in the near future of having that 10 firefighters, we're eliminating that fourth squad or that fourth shift, we're just going to go to A, B, C shift, the rotation of 24, 48.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion that council authorize the appropriate township official to execute the amendment to the existing labor contract with the International Firefighters Union for the purpose of instituting the position of fire captain.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six nothing. All right, payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I did review the payroll and bills, and a few things that were in there that people would be interested in, higher payments, we did purchase the property for the fire station, Liberoni's payments for Phase One, and payments to Mackin. I move that these be approved as submitted.
I'll second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, correspondence, there is none, minutes of other boards and commissions, if anybody wants to discuss anything?
I have two questions, if I could. Under parking record and observation, I wanted to commend them, the board, for, they updated the usage policy regarding prohibiting vaping and e-cigarettes, adding that to the regular tobacco and alcohol prohibition. So I thought that was very insightful for them to remember to update that. So I wanted to just say that that was a good idea.
And what's going to come back to you very shortly, Michelle has been tasked with taking all of the policies that exist in the Recreation Department and consolidating them into a form that we've been using, and that should come back to you shortly for council to take action on.
Thanks. And one thing under cable board, in the minutes, there was something about a recommended name change for the group, and it says it was submitted and they're waiting for a response. And I just, I happen to have been at a meeting when that was initially discussed, I wondered, did they submit a name, and is it in your hands, or where are we with?
I'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, miscellaneous.
A couple things, while we have Chief McLaughlin here, I just, before we go do this, I just want council to be aware, because you may get surprised when you see what you get. You know, we have the old fire truck, and it needs to be sold, and the fire truck is 33 years old, is that correct? So, we're going to sell this truck, and it may look shiny, but it's probably not going to get you much more than $5,000 or $10,000, because it has little value at this point. But, we are going to go out and sell that truck. I think the thing to keep in mind about the truck is that in essence, the township's already sold it once. We sold it to the volunteer fire company, who bought it as a reserve piece of apparatus, and we were the recipients of that payment, so. We have March 28th down as the township tour date. The only reason I bring this up is that I know, now though, that Mr. Lewis and Mr. Cozer are not available on that date, and my question to council is, do you want to proceed, or is your preference to find a date when everybody could be there?
I think we should try to find another date when everybody's.
What's the date that you'd pick?
The date that was, that we all agreed to was March 28th.
And I'll take responsibility for that, because my wife planned a weekend away for us that weekend and didn't tell me.
TMI.
And, I'm just saying. We're just going on this country, look for furniture, okay?
Sure. This has to financial settlement here.
I'll tell you what, I will send an email to council, and we'll see if we can find a date that works for everyone.
Oh, you're negotiating for buying a new fire truck.
One of the things we talked about with, at the school board meeting, was this idea of entrance gateway to the high school and the park property. And I wanted to discuss that a little further with council from two aspects. One, it is my opinion, given that we're going to be in the process of revising the sign ordinance, that this would be the time, if in fact, you wanted to provide the ability to do that type of signing sometime in the future, this would be the time to make the accommodation with inside of the ordinance. So unless council tells me otherwise, we're going to proceed on the basis of working with the school district, to come up with some criteria that we can incorporate into the ordinance that would allow this to occur at some future date, if both parties decide they want to do it. The other thing is, if you want to explore.
Talking about the entrance sign on East McMurray.
East McMurray Road, going into the high school and the park property.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I don't understand why they would want to put their other sign on top of the hill by the school.
And I.
I mean, who's going to see it up there, other than someone going by up there?
But they're going to need a sign further up to direct people into the area where the public will go.
It doesn't have to be electronic, would it?
No, no, I wouldn't think so. But then again, perhaps that's where the electronic sign.
From what I understand.
The comment that they didn't want to spend the money, to me, you're spending $100 million. What do you think that sign's going to cost?
Well, and that was going to be my second.
$5,000, $10,000?
Well, the sign's going to cost what it's going to cost, whether it's up on the hill or down there. It depends how much it costs to run the power supply down.
No, that was ridiculous.
Well, I don't know that, just personally, and for people who weren't at the workshop, the entrance, what Mr. Lauer proposed was to take signs on either side of the entrance to help identify the township side of the property and the school district, and make it kind of a, maybe a stone or a monument sign, not necessarily electronic. Because I do agree that they're going to, I think they need a sign further up anyway. But I think that's a nice lot, and it doesn't have to be huge, but it's a gateway to new construction, and I think it would be important.
Yeah, and the point that I was trying to make at the meeting was, I think the reason why you want to do it is, beyond the aesthetics of it, I think you want people to understand they're entering a special place, and that it may cause people to drive through that space differently than they might if they simply perceive it to be a public road, which it is. So, the second thing is, you know, I had a chance to talk to the architect for the school district, he's also the architect for the township with regard to the buildings that we're building, is to look at the possibility of providing us some samples and cost of doing this kind of thing. If you want to do that, it's going to cost a few thousand dollars to develop that scheme. Is that something we're willing to do? I think it would make sense, quite frankly.
Aye.
I would agree, and I think he needs to also look at what should be on the Center Church entrance sign.
Yes.
Because again, it's the same concept of introducing people to that site.
Right. Yeah, I would think that you would want to mirror what's on the bottom, but not necessarily the scale of what's on the bottom. That's what I would think.
The general, we'll put a nine example.
The bottom needs to have similar signs on both sides, and a similar version of that on the top.
Top, yes. Okay.
I agree.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead, and we're going to work on that, so.
Okay, Mrs. Merrill, you got anything?
I just wanted to do a public service announcement. It's come to my attention that the Peters Pantry is going to be in need of volunteers to continue running it. Many of you may know that the Washington County Food Bank has a food bank site here in Peters, it's run out of peace lutheran, and it's been run wonderfully for five or six, maybe longer years, by Lauren Norton, who is going to be stepping down. There is, it's really a job for two people, she has a partner who, they split clerical duties and operational duties, but they're having a little bit of trouble finding somebody, and so I suggested that I could make a plea, tell people that it's, if there is an opening. She is very well organized, they have a lot of things set up. The actual onsite time is usually two days, once a month, when they do setup of the site and then do distribution. There is work in between, but it's, you don't have to be onsite, you can do a lot of it from home. If you're interested, you can check out the Peters Pantry Food website, or you could go to the Washington County Food Bank website. But unfortunately, if they don't find people, the county may make a decision to pull that site from Peters. So, I just wanted to share that with everyone, and if anyone has the interest and the ability and the time, please think about volunteering for that.
Good, thank you.
One other thing, Mr. Chairman, I noticed today on the way home, that for about the third time in the last two weeks, there's been a wreck at the intersection of Center Church and 19. And, you know, we had the fatality there a couple weeks ago, and it looks like tonight was a similar thing. At least, the way I could tell, was someone coming across from Harvey's trying to get to 19, they got hit by somebody coming north on 19. Have we ever given any thought to doing something about that entrance down there, making that only right-in, right-out, or something like that, because it's getting to be increasingly dangerous trying to get off of 19, across 19 onto Center Church, and next year when they open the school, I don't know what's going to turn.
Well, see, and I, actually, on the township tour, one of the things that I wanted to do was to go down Center Church Road and stand there with council. I think making a left-hand turn out of Center Church Road to go south is something that we might want to consider prohibiting, and encouraging people to go down Willhaven to go out at the light. You're going to have 400 parking spaces for high school students, not all of them are headed that direction on Center Church Road. In fact, we think the majority are coming back to East McMurray Road, but you're going to have a sizable number of kids going every day, and I don't think you want people making left-hand turns out of Center Church Road.
I agree with that. I think, though, you'll get people cutting through the back of whatever that strip center is.
They already do.
Mr. Schwartz, or speak.
It's really no different than Hayes and Washington St. Clair, it's the same setup there.
But, or, what do we make it one way? Or we make that spin one way from 19 up to Willhaven?
I don't know. We got much looking at it, but we're going to talk about it when we have the township tour.
Yeah, I do think it's good.
Anything else?
Mr. Bob, since we were talking about traffic, I had sent an email, I think, to you about the bill about the radar for the state, and apparently this bill is now going to be up in front of legislation again, to enable our police force to use radar. Would council collectively want to send a recommendation? I mean, I've already emailed my representatives and other people, if you're interested in having our police have radar, please look at that, but would it be of any benefit for council to send a letter? But would it be of any benefit for council to send a letter to the representatives?
I talked to Representative Mahalik, I talked to Representative Cale, I talked to Representative Ortita, and Senator Ortalata. Just, you know, did a little poll on it. There are some differences of opinion right at the moment on the bill as it exists.
Okay.
And I think that there's two different versions of it, apparently, in the House. I think right at the moment, it would probably be better to let them resolve the differences and come up with a clean bill, see what they want to do. I think that it would be a good idea overall to have it. I think we need to figure out, let them figure out what it is that they want to do, if that makes sense to everybody.
Well, I can agree with that. I think it's just that they, I would like them all to know, and that's why I emailed, that I think it's an important thing.
Yeah, I think if anybody wants to, you know, get hold of, I mean, our representative is Representative Mahalik and State Senator Avino, so I wanted to get hold of them and let them know that, you know, you support the idea, that would be generally.
I know that Chief Grimes has, Chief Grimes has asked, has wished for that openly.
That's on his wish list. Yeah, I mean, I think right now it's in the process of being put up.
Okay, thank you for that insight.
I just have one quick thing. I took my 90-year-old mother to the Jefferson Historical Society on Sunday. They had a Canonsburg artifacts exhibit at the Elks Club in Canonsburg, and she wanted to exhibit some of the pottery that my grandfather made at Canonsburg Pottery. But anyhow, of all the exhibits they had there, there was a lot of neat stuff, one of which was a map of Peters Township, showing the original allotment of the various parcels from 1780s. Have you ever seen this?
Yes.
Were you part of Virginia?
No, I can say, when the line was struck to make Washington County part of Pennsylvania and recognition of 13 colonies, there were 13 municipalities created. One of those was Peters Township.
Well, it was a cool map, and I just didn't know whether we have that. I took a picture of it. I don't know whether we could have it reprinted somehow, but I thought it was a really interesting because obviously the Wright Farm is one of the ones. I didn't recognize very much any of the other names, but they're all big parcels. I mean, they're all, you know, 125 to 300 acres.
Okay.
My mother's exhibit was well received. Thanks.
Okay, anything else? Items for the next agenda? Comments? Okay, we have an executive session dealing with some legal and some personnel matters. Other than that, we are adjourned.